Gonna be done by 7:15.
Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours. We're live and we are recording.
Okay, I'd like to call to order Wednesday, March 24th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. It is now 6:31. I'm gonna determine a call him. Mr. Reyes.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny.
Eric.
Mr. Mattson.
Present.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Here.
Vice Chair Colonian.
Yeah.
Chairman Flynn is here. We have three accused, uh, excuse tonight. Mr. Paselli, Mr. Anderson, and Secretary Lukewitz are not here at this time. Okay, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which we stand.
One nation, on the ground. In the vision. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, number four on the agenda is approval of minutes, 4.1, February 24th. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Please, Mr. Kenny has a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson. Do any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call on that. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. All right, number five, we have a recommendation to Town Council. It is a recommendation to Town Council on an amendment to an Article 10 of Coventry zoning ordinance. Earth removal, sand and gravel extraction. Referred to Planning Commission by Town Clerk for review and recommendation as provided in RIGR number 45-24-27. Mr. D'Agostino, you want to take this on right now?
Can we just hold on a minute, please?
Absolutely.
There's somebody that came in as Sam Suozza, and that's not Sam Suozza. So could that person please identify himself?
Yes, I'm sorry. I came up the wrong email. This is Robert E. Coogan, Jr. for 60 Raymond's Point.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ron, you can continue.
No problem. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I just wanted to review, um, uh, something with you. It's not going to have an impact on your vote or, or vetting of this proposed ordinance this evening. But I just, it's, this is really just to let everybody know. So when this was presented to the, by the Council at the Council meeting on March 8th, for a first reading, it was then sent by the Council to the Commission for review as, as required under the Towns Rules and Regulations and under state statute. One thing that the Council did discuss at their meeting on March 8th was the Council's desire to include a public hearing by the Planning Commission in the approval process. So if you go to the attachment, that is, uh, that is the draft ordinance. If you look at page five of that and you look at section 1026, you'll see that there are two strikeouts in that, in that paragraph of the word "public." And I'm just gonna read it. Within 30 days after receipt of a completed application, the Planning Commission shall conduct a public, and that word is struck out, hearing on the proposal, period. Then it goes on to say, at the public, the word is stricken, hearing, and then it goes on. So the Council has asked that the word "public" be reinserted into this document. And I've actually supplied the Town Manager with a copy of this ordinance with the words "public" put back in. That is scheduled for a second reading and a further public hearing by the Council at a future meeting, once they get your recommendations. I just wanted to clarify that. I know it was kind of long-winded. But I just wanted to explain, should you be following this and also following when it comes back onto the Council agenda, you'll notice that the, the public hearing process has been put back in. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm here to answer any other questions that you might have.
All right, no problem, Dave. Just a clarification. So the public, uh, we will have a public hearing in planning and zoning will also have a public hearing.
That is correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, so, um, any, anybody else have any questions on the board on this after reviewing the packet? All right, I'll entertain a motion. We're gonna entertain a motion on, uh, on 5.1, Recommendation to Town Co-, to Town Council on the Amendment of Article 10.
Chairman, I'll recommend a favorable motion on Article 10, Earth Removal Sand and Gravel Extraction, to the Town Council on the revisions made, noting that in section 1026, the word "public" has been reinserted.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Reyes. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll, I'll take a poll. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye, so motion carries. Okay, moving over to old business for discussion and interaction. Public informational meeting. Comprehensive permit for master plan 445 Fairview Avenue, owner B. Wayne Realty LLC. Uh, applicant Pazuko Construction. This was originally proposed as a, uh, 10 residential units with 25% deemed to be affordable on an existing multi-unit residential parcel consisting of nine units. It's AP 63 lot 154, zone 20, with a total property area approximately of 1.5 acres. And the address is 445 Fairview Avenue, Avenue. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. He represents the applicant, and Mr. Duhamel, the project engineer, is here with me.
Okay. All right, Mr. Cronin, uh, do you want me to just to open up public hearing or do you want to just do a quick?
No, I thought Mr. D'Agostino was gonna give a brief spiel.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. D'Agostino.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just so everyone is aware, there was a technical glitch. As, as you recall, this, this case was on for a public informational hearing last month. And the Planning Commission voted. Apparently, there were, uh, there was a technical glitch in, in the hearing. And it's been alleged that certain members of the public that had an interest in speaking were kicked off the, the meeting and could not adequately participate in the, in the public comment, or the public hearing that was heard last month. So out of an abundance of caution and with the applicant's acquiescence, this matter is on this evening to reopen public hearing. And, uh, and then after which the public will, who didn't get a chance to speak that last month, will have a chance to speak. The public hearing will be then closed. And then the Commission is free to address the decision. And including whether or not any, anything from the public informational meeting changes the, this, uh, changes the Commission's mind. But we'll, we'll get to that bridge if and when we come to it. I just wanted to explain why we're going back into a public hearing. It's to account for a technical issue that occurred last meeting where some people have alleged they did not get the chance to fully participate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostini. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, can I, can I have a minute, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
There's now two Tim Beehands in the meeting. Why is there a second Tim Beehand? Tim, have you been giving out your thing?
Yeah, excuse me, uh, Mr. Beard's online as well.
Oh, is that who that is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any additional testimony or changes to the plan to present at this time. We're here to answer any questions or concerns of the board.
Okay, Mr. Cronin. So I, I, you know, with the board went over this and extent amount of time last time, but we will mo-, open up the public hearing because of the glitch. We always give the public the opportunity to talk. So, um, saying that, I'll, uh, take a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Kenny. Okay, I'll, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian. Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye. So public hearing is now open. So Russ, do you, you want to bring your first, first person in on public hearing?
Sure.
I just brought somebody, uh, can you hear us?
Hi, this is Rebecca Nito at 32 Black Rock Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Just, okay, there you go.
Just your name and address, please?
Rebecca Nito, 32 Black Rock Road.
Okay, Mr. Nito, Mrs. Nito, go ahead.
The last meeting, they had cut the two buildings down to four units rather than five.
Yes.
And I see in your minutes, it again says five units, and that's what was on the certified letter that I received. So has something changed?
No, on the agenda, it says, I said originally proposed as a 10 unit. It is now, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Cronin, it's down to eight units.
That is correct.
Two buildings of four units.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Anybody else, Russ?
Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard on this petition here this evening? I see we have eight attendees. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on this petition here this evening? I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on this petition here this evening for 445 Fairview Avenue? Seeing none, Mr. Chair?
Okay, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second it.
Wait a minute, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Could you have someone else please make the motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
All right, motion by Mr. Kenny, and I have a second by?
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes. Any discussion before I close? All right, hearing none. Any discussion before I close? All right, hearing none. Mr. Reyes.
Yes.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian. And Chairman Flynn also says aye. So the public hearing has been closed. Any discussion? I'm seeing no discussion.
Nope.
So, uh, staff, can I go into ratification or?
Yes, you could jump to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, 6.2, we have a ratification of decision for just heard 445 Fairview Avenue. And I have a motion for the ratification of the decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we ratify the decision.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Colonian. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So ratification of decision, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Okay, next we have another ratification of a decision. 7.1, it's preliminary application for Fairview Avenue subdivision owners Joseph LaCroy, 60 Wood Cove Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island, applicant saying proposed two lot minus subdivision of a vacant lot, AP 80 lot 15, zone R 20. Address zero, Fairview Avenue. I have a motion for a ratification on this.
I'll make a motion for ratification.
Okay, Mr. Kenny makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Ozinkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So that decision has been ratified, 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 excuse me. Okay, moving along to new business for discussion and interaction. It's a recommendation for, for the zoning board of review for a special use permit. Matthews Garage 57 East Shore Drive, owner John Matthews. Applicant Steve Lawrence, Lawrence Builders and Company. Proposed addition consisting of an attached two-car garage in a second-floor master suite on a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record resulting in an expansion of a non-conforming structure. AP 39 lot 40, zone R 20, 57 East Shore Drive. Anybody here representing the applicant?
John Matthews is on, and, uh, Mike Russell should be on as well. Steve Lawrence had a death in the family and could not make it.
Well, sorry to hear that. See you in our prayers.
Who is, who is Mike Russell?
Mike, are you on?
Who's Mike Russell?
Mike, Mike Russell is, uh, is, um, the architect.
All right, so I'll bring him in.
There should be a Mike Russell and a Chris Palmer, who is the servant.
He's asking to come in too, okay.
They're, they're working in Steve's spot.
All right, so Chris Palmer, you said also?
Chris Palmer and Mike Russell.
All right. Chris, can you hear us?
I can.
All right, Mike, you're muted. Can you hear us? Mike Russell, you need, there we go. Can you hear us, Mike?
There we go.
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
Yes, whoever, whoever either of the two want to do a presentation on the board on what you're gonna do here, whoever wants to take, take it on is more than welcome.
Uh, I, I guess I can, I can help out.
Okay, Chris.
I know, I know there was probably with the people being absent and stuff. What we have here is a, um, existing non-conforming lot of record. The applicant is proposing to put an addition on the property. As you can see, the proposed addition, um, is gonna need dimensional relief from the sideline. Because the zoning ordinance, because of the lot width, is making the sideline 25 foot instead of 20 foot, um, from the underlying R 20 zone. What we're proposing is keeping in line with the R 20 zone. Keeping the, the addition more than 20, just, just over 20 feet off of the sideline. And then, uh, keeping the front, um, in conformance with the R 20 zone as well. So that's what the applicant is proposing. We have, uh, Mike Russell is the professional engineer. He has, um, a septic design in process with DEM. The addition will be outside the 50-foot, uh, DEM regulated setback as well. And that's pretty much what the applicant is proposing here. So, uh, because it's a non-conforming lot, we're here before you, um, with this plan and then asking for a favorable to go to zoning.
Okay, do you have any other testimony, Chris, or is that it?
Um, we can, uh, you can have Mike testify just on, on what he's doing. He's gonna, because the, the lot has existing cesspools on it. So the applicant, um, is going to be upgrading the septic system as well. Um, and just to make note, we are not changing the amount of bedrooms, um, in this house. It's gonna stay the same. He just wants to put a, it's basically the garage. He wants to put his cars in the garage and reconfigure that, that kind of crazy parking area, um, where it is now.
So there's an existing cesspool there now, or multiple cesspools?
Multiple cesspools. Uh, you can, I think there's one right in the front over, if you look at that big oak tree where the wall is. Right there, yep. And then there's one in the driveway, uh, right there, yeah. And so, um, the applicant just purchased the property and he wants to bring everything up to date.
Well, it'd be nice to see cesspools disappear, that's for sure. Is that it?
Uh, that's it for me. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry. Mike, if you have anything to add?
And Mr. Chairman, uh, Mike Russell, LDC Engineering Consulting, on behalf of the applicant. And I think Chris pretty well summarized it. Uh, our task for the project, uh, is to, uh, uh, design a septic system upgrade. It's gonna be an advanced treatment system, uh, to replace the existing cesspools. And as you say, that's going to be most welcome, given the location of this lot relative to the lake. Uh, also, uh, we will probably have to do a preliminary determination application with DEM for, uh, uh, stormwater management as the addition is in excess of 600 square feet. So we've had some pre-application discussions with them. We wanted to get through the town process first. Make sure the soils are, are suitable, uh, for a septic upgrade and, um, move forward at, at that time. So happy to take any questions relative to that process or processes, uh, from any of the board members.
Hey, does anybody on the board have any questions? This is a recommendation to zoning. Go ahead, Rick.
Um, so I just want to verify the, I know it's non-conforming now, but it's primarily the setback from the street. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, um, and it's the lot size as well. The lot size doesn't conform to the zone. And the lot size doesn't conform, so, uh, this lot falls into the supplementary zoning requirements for non-conforming lots. If you look at the top of my plan, uh, the front yard gets, uh, reduced to 25. The side yard, believe it or not, because the width gets increased to 25 rather than 20 from the underlying zone. Um, and then the rear gets, um, decreased. So the only part of the addition that, um, is going to need dimensional relief is the sideline. Because we're gonna meet the current R 20 zone rather than the, um, supplementary regulations.
Okay, I think I understand. But it just, I, I, I guess what I was getting at is in the R 20, whether it's, I, I was looking for that on the plan and I didn't see it, but I'm just looking at the proposed plot plan. So basically.
It's up at the top, um, if you look at, and it was up at the top near budding street index.
Dimensional setback requirements, and then you've got one set, and then you've got another set in parentheses.
The parentheses is the supplementary, um, that the town requires, um, because it's a substandard lot.
617, no. You got the wrong. You're holly poofing.
Mike Beard, please mute. Um, so, okay, but in a normal R 20 zone, the sideline setback is 20, right?
Yes, we couldn't, I confirmed all of these regulations with the zoning.
All right, yeah, okay. So really, you're not, yeah, you're not really asking. And then I just have one more question. I think there's no sewers over there yet. I know they were contemplating them.
Not yet.
No, I live right up the hill from him. No sewers.
Nothing for the.
We checked out with the town and they said there's no plans because it's downhill and require pumps, so it's probably gonna be the one last ones to get sewers.
Okay. All right, how confident are you they're gonna approve the, the Advantix? Good? Have you done soil data yet?
Uh, yes, we have. Um, so we've got, uh, the app, we've got soil readings. It's, it's, um, uh, based on the, the application anticipated. It may have to seek, uh, relief for the groundwater table. But if they treat this as a repair for no increase in flow, uh, it'll be allowed. You know, they're replacing cesspools with advanced treatment, so I, I don't think DEM is gonna deny the homeowner a sanitary convenience.
Right.
And we also plan on, given the timing of this, uh, uh, submitting a wet season determination, uh, to DEM to possibly get a, uh, better water table determination that might, uh, give the applicant a couple of options, um, for a system. The, the leach field mainly.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant? I said nearing, uh, being so close to the water, I'm glad to see the cesspools go, that's for sure. But, um, we're only, we're only making a recommendation to zoning, and it'll certainly be their purview. Uh, anybody else from the board have any, have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman Flynn, uh, Mr. Kenny, I'll entertain, I'll, excuse me, I'll make a favorable recommendation to zoning. Uh, address 57 East Shore Drive, AP 39 lot 40, zone R 20 residential. Um, the applicant seeking a special use permit for an addition consisting of an attached to our garage, a second-floor master suite on a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record resulting in an expansion of a non-conforming structure. The property has permanent physical address to east, access to East Shore Drive, and the construction of the proposed expansion will not alter or affect the functionality of the existing driveway. It does have sufficient off-street parking. Utilities are pre-existing. The abutting properties and surrounding neighborhoods is primary single focus, single-family residence. The proposal is consistent with the Coventry Comprehensive Plan. The granting of the special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. I would also like to incorporate the, uh, staff's, uh, planning director's report into my recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Kenny. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Reyes. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Reyes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So they, it's a favorable recommendation to zoning. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
You're welcome.
Board, thank you.
Hey, next on the, on the agenda is 8.2. It is also a recommendation to the Zona Board to review for special use permit. Ferries Properties LLC, 1049 Main Street. Owner Ferries Properties LLC, applicant saying proposed interior alteration on the first floor from a business use to a residential use requiring a special use permit for two-family residents, AP 46 lot 10, zone VMC 1049 Main Street. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant Ferries Properties. Mr. Flynn did an excellent job of, uh, presenting my application there. I don't have too much to add. So this is the former reminder building on, uh, Main Street in Coventry. Uh, the reminder has moved. The first floor of the building is vacant. The first floor is made up of 1,327 square feet. Upstairs from that is an apartment already existing, 561 square feet. The, uh, owner has been having a lot of difficulty in, um, finding a commercial tenant for the first floor and is, uh, choosing to convert it to residential. finding a commercial tenant for the first floor and is, uh, choosing to convert it to residential. In the VMC, uh, Village Commercial District, you need a special use permit to have a multifamily home. Uh, the addition of the first floor residential unit would make this a two-family, and thus we're here before you. Uh, obviously, um, but to get on the record, public, uh, utility, public sewer, public water, vehicular access and pedestrian access, all from Main Street. Our utilities from Main Street as pre-existing. No, uh, exterior structural changes are proposed to the building. Perhaps we'll take down the reminder sign. Um, there's ample parking from when it was an office, and there's private trash removal uh, from a dumpster in the parking area. Uh, across the street from this, besides my office, is a couple of residential properties. Um, on one side, there's another office, and on the nearer side, uh, is a hair salon and an apartment building. The rear of the property is the Coventry Bike Path. So, uh, it would fit within the village, uh, the actual village that appears, as well as the village, uh, zoning code, uh, just to run through the special use permit requirements to get them on the record. Uh, auto and pedestrian access from, from Main Street, ample off-street parking, private trash removal. Uh, no visual or noise impact increasing to the neighbors. Uh, it will result in a reduction of signage. Uh, there's no increase in the building size. Uh, no change to any of the side setbacks or yards. And the residential use is compatible with the mixed use or the residential and business area as it exists in the VMC uh, zones. So, uh, that's, uh, my brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Yeah, I think everybody in town is aware of this location. Um, anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Clooney?
I do just one, um. I, did you say, and I apologize if I missed it, I, are you, uh, cause that's being converted from like an office use to a, a residential? Are they tying into the sewer? Is it already tied in or?
It's already tied in.
Thank you.
Answered my question.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, recommendation to zoning, special use permit.
Alright, I'm, this Mr. Kenny, I'll make a favorable motion. Uh, recommend, favorable recommendation to zoning, uh, for ten forty-nine Main Street, AP forty-six, Lot ten, Zone VMC Village, Main Street Commercial. Uh, proposed interior alteration of the first floor from a business use to a residential use requiring a special use permit for a two-family dwelling. The proposed facility will provide for a safe ingress and egress of vehicles. Property has sufficient off-street parking for a two-family residential use. Public water, sewer, and utilities available via Main Street. Uh, signage and lighting will decrease, uh, because the sign will probably be removed. Proposed use is compatible with other uses in the VMC zoning district. The proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The project should have no detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, welfare, or morals upon the issue of the special use permit. I would also like to include the planning director's report in my motion. Thank you.
Please, thank you, Mr. Kenny for making that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call on that. Mr. Ray's?
Hi.
Mr. Kenny?
Hi.
Mr. Mattson?
Hi.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Hi.
Mr. Clooney?
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. A favorable recommendation to zoning for special use permit has been granted.
Thank you. The client, my client and I thanked them.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Hey, next on the agenda, eight point three, is another recommendation to zoning of review for special use permit. Robert Coogan, sixty, Raymond's Point, owner, Robert Coogan. Applicant to same proposed demolition of an existing deteriorating dwelling and construction of a new four-bedroom dwelling, eighty-five-seven, Lot four, Zone RR two, it's sixty Raymond's Point. Anybody here representing the applicant?
No, it's just-
What's that, please?
It's just me.
Oh, go ahead.
And my wife. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm using Sam's screen. I hit the wrong email, but, uh, I am Robert E. Coogan. I am Robert E. Coogan, Junior. We just bought that property. My wife married, uh, uh, right here. So, uh, Sam did a lot of the work, when it started off with the, um, septic system, and, uh, as we bought the, uh, when we bought the property, the more we looked at it, uh, no, no foundation, uh, structurally, had people looking at it, uh, a building inspector. Uh, we just, the more we looked at it, thinking we're just gonna put money into this. Um, we felt it would be, uh, a better long-term investment and safer to, um, build another, uh, structure with a full basement, walkout base.
Yeah, it, uh, it's certainly will be an improvement with, with what is there.
Exactly. I have everything approved by the, uh, Flat River, uh, Covenants Committee. Um, I think we upgraded the letter, square off the property, set it back. We're not gonna get another various because I guess we're within, even though we're bringing it back, it's still within ninety feet of the water, so, um, but, uh, I have a great architect that I've been very, my wife and I were very happy with, Robbie Warren on the Middletown, and, uh, he did a beautiful job in seeing a vision coming out to the property and, uh, we're very excited about it, other than the breaks of the long road.
Yeah. I hear that. Anybody else on the board have any questions for Mr. Coogan?
Maybe you can save some out of the demolition of the old house, Mr. Coogan.
There's not much there. If you want it, you can come get it.
No, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any, any questions for the applicant? Alright, hearing none, I'll, uh, entertain a motion for recommendation to zoning for special use permit.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rick Colunian. I'll make a favorable recommendation to the zoning board um, to approve the special use permit and dimensional val- variance for, uh, the Coogan property at sixty Raymond's Point Road. That's assesses plat fifty-seven, Lot four, in the RR two uh, residential zone. Um, the, uh, project consists of demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new four, four-bedroom dwelling. Uh, it appears the property has permanent physical access to Raymond's Point Road, and the construction of the proposed home will not alter or affect the functionality of the driveway. There, uh, appears to be sufficient off-street parking. There are existing, uh, uh, pre-existing utilities. The abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood are primarily single-family residential dwellings. The proposal is consistent with Coventry Comprehensive Plan. The granting of the special use permit and the dimensional variance do not appear to affect the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood. And I will also just, uh, like to incorporate the planning director's report into my motion.
Hey, I have a motion by Mr. Clooney. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mr. Ray's. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Ray's?
Hi.
Mr. Kenny?
Hi.
Mr. Mattson?
Hi.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Hi.
Mr. Clooney?
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So the, uh, recommendation to zoning is granted for special use permit from the planning board.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. Good luck. I love the, uh, love the rendition. It's gonna look like a beaut-, it's gonna be a beautiful home when you're done.
My architect calls it Coogan's bluff.
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
See you.
Good luck.
I can leave now? Leave the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Unless you wanna stay, I mean, it's kind of exciting.
Okay, yeah.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Hey, last but not least, eight point four, pre-application plan, eight hundred Gibson Hill Road, owner, Michael P. Baird Trust, applicant saying proposed two lot minus subdivision with one existing house. AP three nineteen, Lot twelve, Zone RR five, and again, that is on eight hundred Gibson Hill Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
I'm here, Timothy Beahan, professional engineer.
Hi, Tim. How are you?
Pretty good. If I, uh, if I, uh, share the screen, go through the plans?
No, not at all. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
But you wanna share the screen?
I, I got it, Russ. Can you see it?
Yep. Someone took care of it. Thank you.
Okay, just, uh, walk through the, uh, the plan set. Here's the, uh, subject, uh, property. It's identified as, uh, map three nineteen, Lot number twelve. It's approximately thirty acres in size. And this is, uh, Gibson Hill Road here, you can see, and Plain Peel, Plainfield Pike over here. Uh, here's a, uh, copy of the plat map, just showing the lot again in relationship to the abutting properties. Uh, it's zoning, it's in the RR five district, so that's a five-acre zone. He's got thirty acres, and it requires, um, three hundred feet of frontage. The proposal or the existing conditions right now, you could see the property here, Gibson Hill Road's down here. The frontage area, and exist, there's an existing dwelling. The driveway comes up here, serpentine in nature, goes up to the house, and there's a septic system here. There are a couple of small pocket wetlands on each side of the driveway here, and essentially that's it. And if we go down to the proposed plan, what we're proposing to do is just cut this into two lots, even though he's entitled to probably, you know, five lots on this property since it's big, just to divide in two. Each, each lot would have sufficient frontage, more than three hundred feet of frontage. The property line, we, we're proposing just to somewhat come up the driveway area, just so when people are driving up the driveway, one side of the lot is one person's land, and the other side of the driveway is the other person's land. Um, the lot line would come up here through the driveway, come, come to this location and, and bank up to the property line. This is that existing house. Uh, the proposal would be to construct a driveway to the rear portion, construct a house back here with a septic and a well. So when you're done with this project, there's, there'd be two lots. One would be twenty point seven acres in size, and the other one would be eight point six acres in size. Uh, there's, uh, a couple of questions our, our end, just going forward after pre-application. The reg-, the regulations state, this is a minor subdivision because it's two lots. If there's no waivers requested, in the subdivision regulations, it has language about unusual lot shapes. And it's up to the planning board to make that decision. And it also says if the lot width to, um, to, to length ratio exceeds three, which it's an unusual lot, one could argue it definitely does that. Um, we're looking for directions. Should we submit this as a major subdivision? The next submission and ask for that waiver, or B, submit it as a minor subdivision and not ask for that waiver. So it's planning board's decision on that. And, and if we go with the major subdivision, we request that we combine the master and preliminary plans going forward. Other than that, I'd like to answer any questions you have. And for the record, Mr. Beard is on the line under my other name.
Yeah, before I open it up to the board, I, I don't have a problem with, with the minor subdivision. Uh, how does the staff feel on that?
I'm okay with minor.
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
Uh, basically, it's gonna be your call. Um, you know, I, I, I understand what Mr. Beahan's talking about. He's being a little cautious.
Yeah.
You know, we, there is, there's a provision in the ordinance that says, um, you have to go, uh, because of the shape of the lot, i- it's difficult to do what the ordinance says. Tim, do you have that in front of you?
I have a copy of the ordinance, yes.
And, and what does it say about the, um, the lot line?
The lot line, hold on, let me call it up.
Cause I don't have my subdivision regs right in front of me on that, um.
Right, I, I could read it to you. It says, "The planning commission shall have the right to prohibit or require modification to lots which are shaped or configured in such a manner as to conflict with the use of the land for the intended purpose. In particular, long, narrow strips of land shall be avoided in creating residential lots. Unusual shapes, angles, and dimensions shall be avoided in lot layout and design. The commission may, in reviewing a proposed subdivision, require modification to the proposed lot layout as it deems necessary to achieve the purposes of these regulations. All lots shall be configured so the depth to width ratio does not exceed three to one ratio."
Okay, um, so basically, the board has to decide whether this curved area right here, if they consider that any, an unusual shaped property line that causes the applicant to need to ask for a waiver, which would in turn kick it up to a major. Um,
I understand, yep.
I don't think it's, it, it's basically, it's, it's being dictated by the shape of the lot. I mean, i- it, they're doing the best they can with what they've got. They're not, you know, they talked about the long strip, that, that's the old style hockey stick lots. They're not looking to do something like that. So I think the board just has to decide whether, are they comfortable with the way the subdivision looks? Um, and whether they feel that it's considered because of its appearance, appearance, needs to request for a waiver. So, I mean,
I'll, uh,
way it looks, I, uh, but I'm gonna let the, the board decide on, uh, whether it goes as a minor or a major.
Before I open it up to the board, uh, I have absolutely no issue with a minor. I'd, I'd hate to see, uh, Mr. Beard have to go through the major for a two-lot, uh, subdivision. But I'll open it up to the board. That's my opinion on it. Anybody else on the board have any, any questions?
I don't, I, I don't see a problem with it being a minor.
Either.
To get it up to a major, I think is-
That's crazy, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's unnecessary.
So, the, the way those regulations read, it, it appears there's, there's definitely latitude for the board. Uh, so long as the legal interpretation doesn't mandate, um, something other than that, I don't have a problem. But I do, because, because it's really, it's a hardship situation. He's already got his driveway cut there, and he's got wetlands on both sides. So to do anything else is gonna make access almost impossible. However, um, it, once these two, is there a, a no further development stipulation that will be put on this? In other words, we're not gonna get back a year from now, and we're gonna have a third lot in the back?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
So you're-
Absolutely not.
Yep, okay, so it, that-
It's for my, it's for my kids.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just as long as that's the way that it's gonna stay. So will that be, will that be? Yeah, will that be a deed restriction, Russell? I don't know how we deal with that. I know in some cases, we've had, we've had these come before us, and we've said no further.
Yep.
Cuts, once, once it's approved. Is that something that's done?
Whatever you, whatever you wanna put on it, Russ, is fine with me.
I'm gonna leave it up to the board. That, that's, that's your responsibility.
I, I believe that's-
If the board wants deed descriptions on it to say there's no future building, that's fine with us. Tim, we can put that in the plan, no problem.
Is that Mr. Beard talking?
It is.
Yes.
Mr. Beard, in my opinion, I think the town should promote what you're doing. Uh, you're, you're putting a lot in for your, for your child. Um, and I have, I have no issue at all with a minor subdivision with the restriction of no further development if that, if, if you're inclined to doing that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Anybody else from the board?
And, and by the way, I just wanna point out, I, I wouldn't have a problem with them going further with the lots. I just don't wanna treat this as a minor and then find out later on, we could, you know, take another bite at the apple to make it a major. That's, that was my point.
Can we get a, can we get an opinion from Mr. D'Agostino?
Absolutely.
Yes, so, um, I was gonna add, cause I, I, I know Mr., uh, Vice Chair Colunian, uh, talked about whether this was legal. And, um, the, the language in the subdivision regulations gives the planning commission the authority to do what you are doing. So it's, it's not a question of, is it, is it, uh, is your decision comporting with the subdivision regulations? It is for the reasons that have been stated on the record, the uniqueness of the lot and, and just your, your vetting of this pre-application. So I, I, I don't see that there's any issues here.
I agreed with the first two-thirds. It was that last paragraph where it talked about the ratio. It didn't appear to give us, it, it almost was more of a statement, and, and that's why I didn't have it in front of me, so that, that's why I asked the question. The other two, it seems to be the planning- The other two, it seems to be the planning board may, but that last one where it talked about the lot ratio. If, if your interpretation is we have the discretion to go with minor, I'm fine with the minor.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Beard, because of these Zoom meetings and COVID, we do not do any sidewalks. But if anybody from the board wanted to go out and look at it, would you have any problem with that?
Absolutely not. Let me know when you're going. I'll meet you there.
I've been over there several times. I, I know the layout. I don't have any issues at all with it. And I, it sounds like everybody on the board is agreeing with that. It sounds like you got your one fuzzy feeling.
Chairman Flynn.
Yes.
I just want to, I want to address Mr. Beard for a minute. Mike, um, this is. No, it's not. No, I, I just want to make sure that, that. If you have any inclination that you may want to divide the lot later on. Now would be the time because that way it gets all done in one shot. Not that I'm pushing you to.
It's really, it's really nice out there. And if you, when you, if anybody wants to come out, I'll bring you out. I've already cut the road. I've, I took all the stumps off the site. I got the rocks all done. We wood chip both sides of the road. It's beautiful. And the lots, the way the house is going to go, I needed to get all that accomplished because. I didn't think we were going to have an issue, but I was preemptive on doing that. But I also wanted to make sure that my survey, we've hired Coventry Survey, as Tim will tell you, we've hired Coventry Survey to do a class. They did the class one survey ten years ago, but we had to re-up it for this. We've hired them. They're doing the class one survey again. Soils test to be, well, as soon as we, you guys, you know, we, I would put the soils test in the ground next week. I think the week after next week, I think, prior to your approval, if you guys are okay with this, and that's simple. But no, we no further, no further additional lots. It's two lots. It's thirty-three acres. It's, it's the only way we can subdivide it. There's no other way to subdivide it. And we built a house across the street from my son. My daughter's nineteen at UMaine. She's coming back and. She's got another two years and she's, she's already got post-employment here. So if we let my two daughters move into the bottom house and my wife and I move out in the back, because our house burned four years ago. And we were unable to put the kind and we didn't want to. We wanted to build something that's ours. We have the money from the insurance company. We're good to go and this is ours. And this is trying to replace what we had. So, and you guys have been great as far as the other, what we try to get accomplished on the other lots and all I can say is thank you.
No, that's fine, Mike. I was just, I was kind of actually looking out for your interest there in case you wanted to. That way it was, you know, you had the bite at the apple and it all gets done in one shot. But thanks for the explanation.
I appreciate that, but if you, if you heard the app, the, the, the application is, is Michael Baird Trust. The properties are all in my trust. They're all paid for. There's no selling them. They, they stay to the family. They go continue with the family. And that's, you know, hopefully we'll have grandkids soon. But, you know, whenever that happens, but I mean, the house of north, the house here, the businesses, the properties, they all go to the trust and. They're not sellable or subdivisible.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Beard, I'm, I'm going through something similar and I, and I really think, like I said before, the town should promote what you're doing. Because I, this is what Coventry is all about, you know, having your family right near you. And I, and like I said, I appreciate what you're doing and what you're doing for both your kids.
Coventry's come a long way in the past five years, Ron. It's come a long way in the past five years. I'm actually pretty impressed.
We're trying.
Yeah, I'm actually very impressed.
Thank you.
Yep.
So anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Was any, if anybody wants to go over there, we said that he has no problem with that.
My cell phone, my cell phone is on the application, Ron. It's two five five four three three two. I'm a phone call away. Anybody wants to come up anytime you want. Not this weekend. I'm, I'm going to Florida this weekend. But anytime Monday through Friday during the week after work, whatever the case may be, I'm available.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Well, this is a pre-application. Miss, Tim, do you need anything else from the board? I think. You've heard just about everything we need to say.
I've heard everything. I appreciate it. Thank you. Tim, can you stop sharing the screen, please? Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it. Any, any, anything from the, from the planning department? Anything from interest, interest from the planning department before I adjourn?
No, all I want to say is for one member in particular who's listening eagerly. And I see the big smile on his face. The, even though it's not on the agenda, I'm just going to say it briefly. The comp permit, the comp, the comprehensive plan went back out to bid. Bids are due Thursday, Friday at ten AM. After the bids come in.
You can't be doing this, dude.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Ed, it's in the newspaper.
Yeah, but it's, it's an OMA violation to talk about something not on the agenda.
I know, but I got it. I'm done.
Thank you, everyone.
You could adjourn the meeting, then talk about it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Mr. Mattson, second. By Mr. Clooney.
Ron, Ron.
Yes.
Ron, what, did, 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 is that yes or what do you guys, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get any of that. Was that yes? So is that, you guys are happy with it?
Yeah, we're happy with it, Mike.
There's no vote.
There's no vote on the application.
That's why I didn't hear one. I'm sorry.
You forgot on the time you're on the board?
Yeah, a few weeks. All right, guys. Thank you very much for your time. All right, have a great night.
Thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
All right, I think the means adjourned. I'll do a quick roll call, though. Mr. Ray's.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Mr. Mattson.
Hi.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Hi.
Mr. Clooney.
Hi.
Jim and Flynn also says aye. All right, thanks, everybody.